Good evening, welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. Now I'll call the order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? Being none, at this time I'd like to join us in a salute to the flag.
... The United States of America.
... which stands one nation under God.
... For liberty and justice.
This time I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members, that please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. The first item on the agenda tonight is applicant Kelly, forgive me if I pronounce this wrong, Schweiterman, requesting special permit under section 3.2.5.14 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for use of a car wash at 871, 873, 879 Southbridge Street and 16 Hill Street, Auburn, Mass., map 63 parcel 9, 258, 264, and 267. Anyone here representing, please go to the podium, identify yourself.
My name's Chris Warren. I'd like to thank the members of Auburn Planning Board. I'm the development manager for Sunny's Enterprises. Serve as one of the design and permitting consultants for Jay Patel Regency Real Estate Investments. I'd like to thank you guys for your time and consideration for our special permit request for the proposed express car wash facility at 861, 871, 873, 879, Southbridge, as well as 16 Hill Street. We're excited about the opportunity to bring modern, efficient, express car wash to the area. Appreciate the board's review of our proposal. Special thanks to Dr. Adam Menard for his collaboration during the process to put the materials necessary together for the tonight's discussion. As a product, project overview, the proposed site locations near the intersection of Southbridge and Hill Street, it's currently zoned business highway. Per Auburn's zoning bylaw, a motor vehicle service station or car wash required, requires a special permit under section 325.14, such as, as we are here tonight for the request for approval. The project proposes to combine multiple parcels into a 2.3 site to construct a 48, around a 4,800 square foot express car wash with 29 parking spaces, including vacuum stalls, 1 ADA space. The development also includes supporting features such as digital board sign to enhance customer communication and operation, operational efficiency. Operation and environmental considerations, the car wash will operate seven days a week from roughly 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. It'll have three employees per shift. To mitigate potential noise concerns, we'll implement the industry best standards such as silencers on blowers, mufflers on vacuum units, significantly reducing overall noise levels. The facility is designed to produce, to process approximately 125,000 vehicles per year, averaging 375 cars per day, with an estimated water usage of 6,000 to 8,000 gallons per, per day. Environmentally, the car wash is primarily, it'll utilize biodegradable surfacants for its cleaning solutions. Additionally, the products are free of NPEs and PFOAs to ensure compliance with environmental standards. The utility and infrastructure planning, water supply will be provided by Water, Auburn Water Authority, with the potential supplementation of an onsite well. Sanitary sewer will be provided by Auburn Sewer. Stormwater will be designed to meet all the Town of Auburn's requirements incorporating best practices for water quality and runoff management. As far as traffic and access, we've already engaged in discussions with Chris Silva at Mass DOT regarding the proposed entrance off of Southbridge Street. That meeting was held on the 4th of February. And then the, out of that meeting, a traffic, a traffic impact study wasn't required, but a traffic memo will be provided as a part of the engineering and permitting and entitlement In conclusion, we believe this project will be a valuable addition to the Auburn community, providing a modern, efficient, environmentally responsible car wash facility that meets the, the needs of local residents and businesses. And we, we look forward to working collaboratively with the town and addressing questions or concerns the board may have. Again, thanks for your time and welcome your feedback and discussion regarding the project.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Being none, does anybody on the board have any questions? Go ahead, John.
Does the applicant or Dr. Menard have any information about the triangular parcel adjacent to the proposed development, what the intended uses of that?
This 681 parcel, the top, the top triangular.
Yes, sir.
Right now, we're really just focusing on establishing a car wash and, but through engineering and, and the development of, of the process, we'll, you know, we'll address that.
But you're, you're, the applicant is the owner of that parcel?
Is in contract for all five pieces of property.
Thank you. No other questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned an onsite well, possibly.
Sir.
What would the location of that be?
We're currently trying to establish the location through surveying.
Yep.
We've reached out to the water, the water district and, and just trying to establish that location. I was onsite today, kind of looking around, but it was snow covered. So we're still in the process and we'll be determining water flow, you know, the water flow and the location during engineering process, the entitlement.
And one other question, you mentioned 6,000 to 8,000 gallons per day, is that something that the sewer department is comfortable handling?
That's still, we, during this process, we're focusing on getting the, the SUP or the special use permit, and then we were going to move into engineering. That's definitely going to be brought up. And then if we can, like, we understand that there is an interdisciplinary exchange, I guess, for upcoming, for the, for water that's going to be shared with, from another city or township. So through that entitlement process, we hope to establish, you know, what you guys, the capacity can be and, and what we can, can do. Through the equipment process, we can also decrease the amount of water use as well by changing nozzles and that kind of thing. So all that'll be up for discussion and, and, you know, we'll go back and forth during the, the entitlement process, if, if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Chris, thank you for the summary. I have three questions, maybe, so the first question is, how many vehicles do you expect in and out of the site?
Well, we're expecting three, about, on average, about 375 per day. At peak times, a size of tunnel that we're proposing can produce one car per minute. So we have 120-foot building and, and we're looking at, at peak hour could produce, produce 120 cars per hour.
I see. And then when is the, the DOT study expected, is there a study that's being done?
For, for Mast dot?
For Mast dot, yeah.
Yeah, we were, we've talked, as I said, we talked to Chris Silva. That's ongoing. But from the initial discussion, they really didn't see any issue with having both off of, either right in, right out, or right in, right out off of Hill or Southbridge.
I see. Okay. Oh, that's right, okay. And then the site plan does not, no, the site layer does not give us information on the emergency vehicle access. Is there a requirement, John? Is there emergency vehicles, so if it's a fire truck that comes in?
We're not at the site plan stage yet, this is just for the permit.
The initial permit, I see.
But those will be addressed, they will be addressed during the design and entitlement.
Design, the drainage, where the sewer goes, where the water goes, where the well may go.
I see.
You know, how much impervious versus pervious that they're going to wind up having.
I see.
That's all going to come. This is just for the permit.
That's all the questions I have.
Thanks. I don't have any questions, just early.
I got a couple. I know you mentioned something about coming in Southbridge Street and going out of Southbridge Street. I think it would be wise to come in off of Route 20 and go back on Route 20, because you got a light right here at Hill Street, and there's a development, they want to put it up on Athens Street off of, off of. If you were to get fed up with the light at Appleton Ave, you're going to go around Hill Street and come out, and they're going to go around Prospect Street and come out. So it's going to just back the cars right up. Meanwhile, if your customers go in one and come out the other, you don't have to deal with all the other traffic, just pull out and go.
Understood, understood.
I mean, I just think it would be a better fit. And then, do you have any idea at this stage what the decibel levels of the air dryers are?
We do have sound studies that can, will be provided at a, you know, during the, the entitlement process.
Same with the vacuums?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because I've heard of, you know, motor mufflers before, I look quiet.
Yeah, yeah. We do have the mufflers, we have the baffles, we, you know, if, depending on the requirements, enclosures for the, the vacuum producers, that, that kind of thing. But we do have sound studies that, that can be provided.
As far as water usage goes, of course, that's got to go through the water district, and a well has to go, see if you're anywhere near aquifers. But what about recycling some of the water? That would save.
We do. There is a recycling standard, is typically about 45%. That's in three reclaimed tanks that are chambered, so, and then we go into an oil-water separator. So it, at the beginning of the car wash, before you get into the, the, well, at the beginning, we can use that reclaimed water to, for some of the processes, but at the end, we are using fresh water to rinse off at the, and then there is a slight evaporation or carryoff of about six gallons, you know, truck beds and that kind of thing.
Now, in the rinse, is there anything added to the rinse to the clean water to keep from leaving spots on your car?
Well, we do do an RO, so it's a reverse osmosis, spot-free rinse at the end, and that addresses the, you know.
Just curious.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's all the questions I have for now. Anybody else have any more? Go ahead, John.
Mr. Chair, a follow-up, and apologies if it's premature at this stage, but do you anticipate any issues with site preparation or demolition of existing structures on this, on the plot?
We don't anticipate, but we, we really have just been focused on getting the permit to then, you know, move, move forward from that.
So this is the entire Ronnie's property, the, the house, the Fish Place, the brick building next door.
Yes, sir.
The area in the back. You said you're under contract for the triangle piece at Hill Street and Southbridge?
Yes, sir. Yes, all five pieces there. And, yeah, I went out to the site today and noticed the, the housing and that kind of thing. So, but again, I don't think we have any issue with demolition or, or site preparation, you know, moving forward, but if, if there are concerns, we can deal with that.
This has nothing to do with the permit and all that, but you're going to, you have homes up behind you, so I would just advise that maybe it would be wise to put an arborvitae along the back to kill that noise, because in the wintertime, I know people's windows are closed, but still, you can hear through the windows. But if the arborvitae's are there, or some green, evergreen, it'll kill, kill a lot of the noise.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed the, the topography, it kind of goes up there and they can.
They had problems with Jay Anthony's with the music outside, it goes right up the hill into that development, so just.
Understood, yes, sir.
Any bills have any more questions?
I just had one quick one.
Sure.
Chairman, has the owner of the property, the potential owner of the property owned other car washes, or is this his first venture into this?
The potential owner.
First car wash? Okay. Thank you.
Wander mat would be safer.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve for the special permit?
I'll make that motion.
Hearing and closing.
I have a motion to open hearings, I never opened it.
Move to open the hearing.
I'll second it.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve for the special permit?
Move to approve a special permit.
May I have a second?
Second that.
All those in favor, John, Lynn?
Aye.
Okay. This whole journey tonight is a vote, special permit approved.
That's it. Thank you, appreciate it.
I miss Ronnie's though. We all do. Other business tonight is to elect CM PRC delegate. Anyone willing to do that?
Mr. Chair, I would defer to the more experienced members of the board, should they wish this opportunity, however, if no one else is interested in surveying, I'd be happy to do so.
If anyone's interested, I nominate John to be our CM PRC delegate. May I have a?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're all in agreement. You're it, big boy.
Thank you, thank you.
Discussion, Athens Street 40B application. The zoning board has sent us a letter to try to advise them on the 40B and what concerns we may have. They give kind of a set of plans, we're not going to be able to restrict the height, I don't think we can restrict the location. They asked for boatload of waivers. I wonder if you guys had time to actually look at the waivers, there's a ton.
The level of density, it's a lot of units.
Sorry?
The level of density, it's a lot of units.
40B.
It's a lot.
I mean, if you, if you read any of the letter, they actually think that this fits in with the neighborhood.
Jesus.
That is, I don't care, I know I'm on TV, it's the ugliest setup I've ever seen.
That's how these new apartments are now.
They're going to be 55 feet high. So you're in the middle of a neighborhood, 55 feet high, we can't say no. When the town limit is 35 for presidential, we can't, we can't say no. That's the state of Massachusetts.
John, so what is, can we send these waiver requests to our consultant? Is there?
Nope.
What is the process here?
So, the ZBA is, is already work of, very example, technical aspects, you have the HP for the traffic. So that end has already been studied. Of the zoning waivers, that, that's kind of more, this, this board's place to, got a comment. A lot of them, we're concerned toward that we don't have a lot, say, to like the height, Perry Place is going to be 45 feet, for Athens, they want it 55 feet. That's a standard waiver that was across the state must grant. But if, if you think there are safety issues, if you think there's broadly issues with, with the projects, we're collecting comments, the Athens Street, they're going through their project eligibility letter with the state, to think about central notification of the site walk next week, you're welcome to come to that. They need to get permission to the state, from the state to come to ZBA. So Athens is in the preliminary stage, so if you have any, see any red flags or concerns for that, now's the time for comments. Perry Place is kind of on the back end, everyone, you've got a couple more meetings left before they have to make a decision. So it's kind of any last minute comments on the Perry Place one.
Mr. Chair, just in, in terms of, in terms of process, I understand that the, we're in the preliminary stage for this, and the other project we'll discuss is at a later stage. And ultimately, the responsibility for managing this is the zoning board of appeals, and they're seeking input from other relevant boards.
Correct.
Rather than have each other board look at this independently, would it be possible to set up some type of mechanism whereby perhaps the zoning board of appeals forms a special committee or subcommittee with representatives from each of the other boards to have a holistic discussion and then go back to each of the individual boards for decisions?
We really don't have the time. The deadline to have comments to the state for Athens Street is March 2nd, and Board of Slough would want comments for the next meeting for review on February 24th. So just, this isn't the time, we'll only give them 30 days to comment on the eligibility.
Is it, is it okay, Chair and, and Adam, if we can go through these, just quickly, you know, understand if there is an agreement here or?
A lot of these aren't even our purview, we have no say in a lot of the waivers they've asked for.
The Chair, the second, the second, third page is, we all have concerns with, so those are going to be looked at more so by their individual departments, like the sewer. We'll look at that and respond, expect the responses from them. I already got responses from the school, school department, I've got response from the fire department, so they're all, they're all on top of that.
I see.
A lot of the requests just are not really feasible.
I see.
On those two pages, the waivers on this, on the zoning, those are, reasonable may not be the right word, but they're, they're more within the, the normal framework of 40B.
So if you look on the third page, under Auburn Sewer Regulations, it says the waivers requested from this requirement, the slope is in excess of the minimum slope of .004, that's minimum slope. 004 is the minimum slope for eight, and you can't go below that. You can't, I don't know how they would get a waiver on that, because the sewer won't flow fast enough.
It's going to go flat.
It'll go flat, and then it starts to build up, and you have all kinds of problems, and it's going to be up to the town to go cleaning, because this won't be private. They got to build, they got a cul-de-sac at the end, they may have to work on to make it bigger, I'm not sure, but they got to do sewer water drainage into the site, and they're, where it's a private building, I assume they're only going to have one water service, one sewer service for each structure, and then I assume they have to have elevators.
Yeah, if they have, yeah, I haven't seen the construction plans for that, but probably.
And assume that the fire department would want to have a sprinkler system in it.
You can't get around building code, you can't get around life safety.
Whose code is it to say 35 feet is the limit, is that the fire departments, or is that?
That's the zoning bylaw.
So it's not a code.
It's not a code. And other parts in town allow the construction of 210 feet.
Like this for industrial.
Right, but, so, 40B was designed to skirt the vast majority of zoning bylaws.
Just in terms of the, oh, the numbers and the percentage of housing within the town, and that these two projects are moving along at slightly different rates, does, will, will one project's moving forward potentially impact the second project? So if, my understanding is the Perry Place project is first in the queue.
Yep.
If it were to go forward as designed, would that then put us over the threshold that would mean that the other project wouldn't necessarily qualify for 40B?
If, if they're already in the pipeline, I don't think it would matter, which is possibly, and I'm speaking, I'm not, not sure, I'm guessing, that's why they got them coming right at the same time. We don't meet the 10%. Albert Street isn't a construction that, that project, when that's built out, will be around 9%. We don't meet safe harbor, which safe harbor means if you have a housing production plan, which we do, and you're building units on a regular basis, which we're not, then we'd be in safe harbor. So I've got questions until the state on what you're asking, and I haven't heard back yet, so I don't have a straight answer for you, but as it stands now, we're on safe harbor, we don't have 10%.
They've also asked for a waiver to allow disturbance within 50 feet of a vegetated wetland associated with the site development. We would have to say yes, because the state requirement is 100 feet, I just looked it up, 100.
For the wells?
Yep.
Yeah, they would still need to go to conservation. What they're asking for a waiver of is more the town.
The brook that runs through there, so.
They have to go to conservation for a minimum of state rules.
You got to go, you got to put cul-de-sac in there or something.
Yeah.
A lot of work, a lot of work.
Mr. Chair, could, could I just get clarification, I'm a bit confused. What we're looking at now is basically this packet, and then the page with the three waivers, that's for the Perry Place?
Correct.
Okay. So, so at this point, we're just considering the Athens Street project, which is this packet, which is in the preliminary stage.
Yep.
And our action is whether we have any comments at this point to go into that first round?
To send to the state.
To send to the state.
So there's a lot of wells at the end of Perry Place?
Yeah, it's Kettle Brook.
What's that?
Kettle Brook.
Yeah.
They, they've been to conservation a couple years ago for their initial project, which they never, they'll have to go back at some point.
Okay, so, with Athens Street, my God, can we see 192 units? Multiplied that by, say, one, it's 192 vehicles, 50, a minimum of 50 kits.
Oh, that roughly.
It's not huge input, but the traffic coming down Appleton Ave to Route 20, there's, there's two cars per unit, and both, say, both parents work, you know, 192 times two, that's a lot of cars.
Is there any potential access to Washington Street from there, from where we are?
I, I spoke to the developer, I've asked to see if there's some kind of access onto Prospect Street, if they could pursue that.
Okay, yeah.
Or Herb Chambers has their parking lot up there, if there's some way to.
There.
I just want you to tap into that.
I think they're on.
A lot of cars on Athens.
Other intrinsic.
Yeah.
Adam, I recall with the discussion of Perry Place, there was a point at which there were discussions with the developer to try to avoid the 40B process, to go through a friendly, I forget exactly the term.
Friendly 40B, LIP.
Was there a similar process with the Athens Street development to have discussions with the developers?
They went straight to the state.
Would it be possible for the town to approach Athens Street to see if they're willing to?
They're not.
Do we know that?
I spoke to him and they.
Okay.
I don't know how they come down to Washington Street or Prospect Street without buying a whole bunch more land.
That's what, they'd have to have access somehow through there.
Yeah, they don't have that, right?
Well.
Theoretically, you could, but you'd have to buy somebody's land.
So, Adam, would, would we, at, you know, at some point, ask for a traffic study? Can we, where, where does that come in?
ZBA, for, for Athens Street, ZBA would require a traffic study.
I see.
Perry Place, they've already done one, it's, it's by review.
Thank you.
That's standard.
So, Adam, once the project, these two projects are completed, let's say hypothetically, we would definitely be over the 10%?
Yeah, assuming they're all built, built out, absolutely.
Unless somebody has another development, regular homes, then you're under 10% again.
That's a possibility.
Oh, yeah.
And the census comes in.
It is, for the Chair, it is a moving target. Every 10-year census, the federal census, the population and the houses get adjusted, so there is a moving target in that sense, and if 1,000 homes get built in the next 10 years, we need to make sure we're still above that 10%, so that those 1,000 homes would be incorporated into the total number of housing, so it would fluct, it would fluctuate, but the, that's unlikely, there would be like a thousand, so no family homes, there's just not enough places to put it. So it, it does move slightly from year to year, from decade to decade, but I wouldn't expect a whole lot.
So would having the, being over the 10% threshold, would that give us more sway when it came to?
You could say no.
We could say.
You could just say no.
Yeah, you can, you can still, it would pretty much have to do an LIP at that point, if you want to have another project, say a project made sense somewhere, yeah, you can work with. you can work with that developer, you would have much more authority to, you'll say no or to require certain things than with, with being under 10%.
We don't get site plans for either of these projects, we don't get, we get nothing, nothing. Which I don't understand, but it all falls on the highway department, water department, and the water department's private, so. I don't know.
So for the purpose of what we're being asked to do, absent these details, would it be useful for the zoning board for us to just restate what the principal areas of concern we might have would be, so they could take that in? And again, I would defer to those with more experience in terms of, in a normal project review, here are the key things that we'll be, we would be looking at, and ask the Zona Board of Appeals to pay special attention to these areas as they conduct their, their work.
Correct, so just a high, high-level comment, so you don't have the, you don't have the details for Athens Street, they just don't exist. Perry Place, all the tactical stuff's been already gone through with ZBA, so it's more high-level stuff, we all know traffic is an issue. That's been a concern for the Perry Place from, from day one, that's going to be a concern with Athens Street. We all know that, but just to reiterate it, does not hurt. If you have concerns with the slope of the property in Athens Street, then, you know, that's a concern. So just high-level concerns for either one of the projects.
Who reviews the site plans then? I mean, you know, you have to have, maintain so much pervious property versus impervious property, parking spaces, handicap spaces. Who looks at that? Nobody?
No, ZBA is reviewing it.
ZBA?
Yep.
But I think the Mass Housing, so where they're sending the application, they do the review, right?
They do it at.
High level?
It's an eligibility, it's not so much a tactical review.
I see.
And ZBA has contracted with Graves for the civil, I used to have standard.
Peer review?
Yep.
Okay.
They've also contracted with V H P for the traffic. So all that's, they don't, they don't get the, they still have to do that.
I see.
That's all, tactical aspects for Graves for Perry Place is 99% done.
It bypasses the, the usual planning board process and then goes into that.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussions on those two? Is everyone signed that's here tonight, the 98 Pine Valley Drive decision?
Yeah.
Did you sign it?
I don't think I did.
Yeah, you were absent, so.
I was absent, yeah.
There's no new business unforeseen by me. Remember the town planner update?
Just if you have any comments on those two projects, I need to know, whether it's tonight or the next couple of days. Time's short, so just.
Anybody else have anything you want to say? Me, nobody. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Lynn, Rakesh.
Aye.
Jason, myself, John Reed, tonight, into the vote, the meeting is now closed.